Okay, it's six o'clock on November 16th. I'd like to call this meeting of the Cleveland County Commissioners to order. And, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation at this time? Thank you. Would you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time in the same place. Good Lord, thank you for this beautiful day you created for us. Thank you for our beautiful county we live in. Thank you for our commissioners. Thank you for the votes and attention. Our county is very important to us. That's why we all came. Our agriculture is the full front of this meeting. We thank you for our farmers in this room and what they think of this county. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. I'd like to start off by recognizing any elected officials that might be here tonight. Any veterans that are here tonight? Would you please stand and tell us what branch of service you were in?
Deputy Fagin, Army.
Tony Hudson, U.S. Army. You've already got one of the pins.
Got it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your service. Um, law enforcement and law enforcement officer.
Danny Allen, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for your service, sir. And at this time, I'd ask any department heads that are here, would you please stand and tell us what you do for the county?
Martha Thompson, Deputy County Attorney.
Tom McMillan, Director of Human Resources.
Stephen Dishar, Water and Water Inspector.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Manager.
Josh Davis, Solid West Director.
Allison, Deputy Human Resources.
Greg Traywick, County Extension Director.
Thank you so much for y'all being here tonight. Now, uh, the staff has requested that item L be added to the consent agenda. This is an item set of public hearing for rezoning case 2027 at 1127 Oak Grove Road. Cleveland County is asking this property be rezoned from manufactured home parks to light industrial. Uh, are there any other items to be added to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Please to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Now it's time for citizen recognition. Um, the citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the commission to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency. And we have several people that signed up tonight, so first I'm gonna ask Robert Williams if he would come up and give us his address and, uh...
Robert Williams, 814 East Stagecoast Trail. I live in Falston, but that's the Landale address. I had nothing to do with it. I live right in the middle of Falston. Anyway, I want to make one thing abundantly clear. I am not an ordained minister. I've never claimed to be. I do, I do think I know what's right and what's wrong, but I am not an ordained minister. And I received an email, uh, in the last day or so that disturbed me a lot, and I sent a copy to all of you guys. It was, it was prepared by an attorney representing Cleveland County and sent to the EEOC. And I looked through that and I thought, a lot of the stuff I've heard, a lot of the stuff I've been sitting in the, in the audience and watched and listened and made notes and this, this and that over the years. And I believe there's a lot of stuff in there that's misleading and deceptive, not necessarily what it says sometimes, but what it didn't say and what was left out, which was the overall truth of the matter. So, in a lawsuit against a county, uh, whatever the lawyers say is what you tell them to say or what they, the knowledge that you have of the situation, whatever. Uh, so, and then you guys, you five commissioners are responsible for that. And I would, I would just, uh, I'd be glad, I don't have but a minute or so left, so I won't try to go into any details, but I would advise you guys to pay attention to what's going on. I think, I think if you would pay attention and do the right thing on, when it, when the right things need to be done, that your number of lawsuits will go down. You are in control of that, not a bunch of lawyers and judges across the state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Randy McDaniel.
Good evening, fellow commissioners. Um, my name's Randy McDaniel. I live at 830 Dixon School Road in Kings Mountain. Uh, small farmer, cattle farmer, uh, hay, uh, and I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about, uh, the agriculture. I mean, it's celebrating agriculture tonight, and I appreciate that, but, uh, we're, uh, you know, got, got concerns on our mind and, uh, and we also would like to point out that agriculture is more than farming. You take the agribusinesses, the tractor dealers, the grain buyers, the, uh, the southern states, the tractor supplies, you know, there's just so much that involves and, and farming itself. Agriculture in, in Cleveland County generates over one, $130 million for our local economy. Uh, Cleveland County is ranked sixth in the state for the total number of cows. I've got a view in that number. We rank seventh in hay production. We rank 10th in barium, uh, fruit production and over 4 million broilers in the county, and that's growing. Uh, I'm also the chairman of the Soil and Water District here in Cleveland County. There's a lot of, this is another thing I'm talking about more than agriculture, more than just farming. The Soil and Water is a county agency that administers state and federal cost programs for farmers. We allocated 600,000, we allocate over $600,000 in the state and federal funding for agricultural projects, dams, uh, stream exclusions, uh, wells, ponds for produce and stuff like that. Uh, that ranked sixth in North Carolina. This is Cleveland County. We rank sixth in North Carolina. Uh, we built more farm ponds for irrigation than any other county in, in the state. We're one of the seven, we are only seven counties, let's see, we're one of only seven counties that get a maximum state reimbursement based on performance. We help farmers conserve farmland. We, uh, conserving farmland is a net positive for the county. The North Carolina, this is interesting fact, I, I didn't really know the figures to, to this the other day, but, and North Carolina, uh, state, no, a university study done in Gaston County now showed that every tax dollar received from farmland, the county made 13 cent. Uh, but for every tax dollar received from residential areas, the county lost 23 cent on that dollar because of the services needed for those areas. So, you know, we look at our monies coming in from residential stuff, that's a lot of money, but then when you look at it, there's more ways to look at it than I would say, and there's more than one way to gain a cap, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. We appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Ms. Thompson?
Hello. My name's Mallory Thompson. I live at 587 Oak Grove Cloverhill Church Road. Get all those words in there, in Landale. Um, I, uh, we farm in the upper part of the county. I work for the greater part of agriculture industry. I sit as the vice chair on the Ag Advisory Board, and I've worked at the 4H Youth Program in Cleveland County. And tonight, we're here to celebrate Cleveland, Cleveland County's grand agricultural history that's over 200 years strong. At one time, Cleveland County had the most cotton acres east of the Mississippi. Today, row crops like soybeans, wheat, and corn and cow calf operations are what make up our landscape. The skeletal remains of Cleveland County's King Cotton days haunt the small towns outside of Shelby. The crank of a combine engine at sunrise or a newborn calf hitting the ground in a dense fog is a testament to Cleveland County's resilience. Small, small yet mighty, Cleveland County's agriculture industry contributes over $100 million to the local economic base and is home to more than 1,000 farms operating on over 113,000 acres. In 2017, Cleveland County farmers produced enough wheat to make 10.5 million commercial loaves of white bread. That's 107 loaves per Cleveland County resident. On September 16th, 2014, Cleveland County Commissioners proclaimed that October 2014 would be Cleveland County Agricultural Month. That proclamation stated that farmers are the stewards of our soil, water, air, and natural resources upon which are the livelihood of our future generations depend. The success of our local farmers and local farmer markets not only keep money within our county, but also fosters sense of community pride. Agriculture is part of our, are, are part of our county's heritage and can and should be celebrated as part of the future. Today, we gather and honor Cleveland County's rich agricultural history yet again. To continue this path of success, we, the Cleveland County farmers, need our county leadership support. We need county investment in agricultural support staff such as agricultural economic developer and investment in agricultural facilities. We need communication from the commissioners in regards to like, uh, land use development. We need conversation from the greater county leadership to and with farmers, and we need a vested commitment from the county to protect this rich agricultural history we stand to recognize tonight. The National Cattlemen's Board Association, known as NCBA, has stated that over the next 20 years, more than 40% of the U.S.'s agricultural land is expected to transition to other use. 98% of our Cleveland County farms are family-owned and family-partnered. These farms are the economic engine of the rural Cleveland County area and a key to the resilient food supply that we rely on. Behind me tonight stands over a dozen different farmers representing different commodities in the county. If you ate today, thank a farmer. An industry that feeds you is an industry worth fighting for.
Thank you. Andrew White?
Hi, my name's Andrew White. I live at North Lee Road. Um, I just kinda come to kind of bring up some other topics that's already been brought up. We, my family farm's, um, kinda in the area that in the land, land use plan, they put it the secondary growth area, um, but we also are a grain buyer for all the local row crop guys and everything, so we supply fertilizer. We buy their grain, seed, chemicals, everything. So I think a big thing is just, um, just thank you for kind of supporting what you have done with agriculture, but we also just come to see the importance of it, what we do bring, you know, revenue base and just the importance of what our county is in agriculture and, and just what that supports. Yes, like I said, the tax dollars, um, are not as substantial as it is in residential, but if you look at the, the expense in that, we don't have a whole lot of expense in keeping up our land as far as services goes. But with the money we do bring back to the county, local economy, most of the, most of the money that farmers do bring in does go back to the local economy. So I just, biggest thing, just to keep focused on what farming, farming does in our county and, you know, without the land to do it on, we can't, we can't continue to do so. So I just like for you to kind of keep in what's important there.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on Brian Appleby, the county manager, to present us with the consent agenda.
Commissioner Bridges, members of the board, several items for consideration this evening, fairly lengthy, so bear with me as I work through this. We'll start with item A, which are minutes from your, uh, September 7th regular commissioner meeting. Those minutes are included in your packet for consideration. Item B and C are both from tax administration. Item B, your collection report for October 2021. Please to report collections total 60.75%. That's about a percent and a half higher than this time last year and certainly trending in a, in a very positive direction. Item C, your monthly abatement and supplement report for October 2021. Abatements total $109,897.39 and supplements total $67,823.16. Item D is from our emergency medical services department. It's the budget amendment number 19 on the year, a request to budget $3,391 in grant dollars received from the Metro Atlanta Healthcare Preparedness Coalition, and we'll use that to buy, to purchase two pieces of rapid response equipment. Item E from social services, budget amendment number 20 on the year. This is a request to budget $16,362 in CARES Act funding from the state, and we're gonna use those to train, specialty train child welfare, welfare workers specifically for children's needs impacted by COVID-19. Item F from the health department, budget amendment number 21, again, a state grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $56,038. And we're gonna use this money to do specific educational programming in elementary schools around the county through the community resiliency model, um, um, to help with substance use prevention and, uh, general education around substance abuse. Item G from the finance department, as you're aware, we have completed and, um, both completed construction and the transaction of selling Shell III. It's a budget amendment number 22 on the year, is a request to budget those proceeds as well as the, um, settlement with the city of Shelby for half of those, that transactional cost. Item H is from tax administration. Very excited about this item. This is a request to set three separate public hearings, um, specific to our small business incentive grant program, which the commissioner started in 2016. These, the three companies involved are BNS Butler Properties LLC, Thoroughbred Partners Limited, and White Investments of Shelby. Each of these companies have made a minimum of $50,000, but not to exceed a $1 million taxable investment, net new taxable investment, and are eligible for a 50% grant over a three-year period. And, and again, statutorily, we have to hold a public hearing. We're requesting to set that public hearing at your upcoming December 7th, uh, meeting. Item I is from the planning department. Again, a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December the 7th. That would be to consider case 2124, which is a rezoning, 527 Kizer Landale Road from residential to neighborhood business. Uh, this is parcel number 36699. It's about 29 acres just north of the water plant there, and I'm, um, and the intended use is going to be an RV park. But again, this request is simply to set that public hearing. Item J for consideration is for the legal department. At, as is customary, annually, as the state updates their, uh, document retention schedules, we, we, we adopt those, uh, and that's, this specifically is through the State Department of Natural Resources, Natural and Cultural Resources, uh, and so we are just asking the board to, uh, adopt the schedules that are included in your packet so that the county remains compliant with those retention schedules. Item K is also from our legal department. As you're aware, the county has been working for some time to sell and, and re-allocate some excess surplus properties back into the, to the private market. Several of these came to the board, uh, a couple meetings ago, but at that time, the upset bid process wasn't yielding a return that staff recommended accepting. We have now, um, um, remarketed that and, and do have it what we believe is a more appropriate, uh, bid, um, uh, specific to parcel 27395 and 27398, which are both on Gorel Street, 328 and 330 respectively, and the recommendation at this time is to approve that sale. And finally, for consideration is the item that was, um, added, is item L, and that is a request to set a public hearing also for December the 7th, um, for, it would be case 2125, I suppose. That, that will, uh, as Commissioner Bridges mentioned, is actually where the Oak Grove Collection Site is, has been functioning for some time. The property historically has been zoned RM for residential manufactured home, um, and, uh, in an attempt, that was prior to county zoning in the year 2000. It's been a non-conforming use since that point, uh, and we're asking the board to approve a public hearing and then consider post-planning board at the end of November, rezoning that property from, uh, uh, residential manufactured home to light industrial so that it would be a conforming use compliant with what's been happening out there now for a couple decades. So happy to answer any questions the board may have, but that can, that concludes your consent agenda.
Anybody have any questions or comments for...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a comment. It's a small business grant, since we've got a lot of farmers here. I know that the farmers had, took advantage of this small business grant.
Sure.
Quite a few of them have, and it's just recently, I guess, the public has picked up on it, but, uh, any of the farmers that don't know anything about it can get with Greg. Greg can get with, uh, individuals because this grant is available for the farmers in buying their equipment, because most of it you can't get for $50,000. It's gotta be plus $50,000, so this, this grant can apply to them.
Any more questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you, Brian. At this time, we're gonna celebrate agriculture in Cleveland County a little bit. I'm gonna ask Greg Traywick, uh, our cooperative extension director, to come out and talk to us about agriculture.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave just a few things with a clerk here that she can distribute to you after my presentation, and I've asked, been asked to, uh, to be brief, and I'll promise to do that tonight, but I am Greg Traywick, Cleveland County Extension Director, and I'm honored to be here to present to you, and I'm even more honored to be surrounded by a lot of good friends in the ag community. I've got members of my staff here, folks from Soil and Water, the Ag Advisory Board, Farm Bureau, and, uh, farmers that represent the broad diversity of what the farm scene looks like in Cleveland County. Having all of these citizen recognitions might have stole a little bit of my thunder, but, um, we're gonna go through just a few things here with you. I've only got about 10 slides, but just hope to kind of update you on where we stand now, sort of what some of the trends are and have been over time, and then look at, um, maybe some opportunities and concerns that we can, uh, address as we move forward as a community. I hope I hit the right button here. Um, as you've heard, um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at changes between 2012 and 2017. This is based on the census of agriculture that the USDA conducts every five years. The most recent data we have is from 2017, but the 2022 census of ag will be released, and next year we'll even know even more about, um, how things are changing. As has been mentioned, uh, ag generates about $134 million in farm gate sales each year. That, uh, contributes significantly to the local economy, and during that five-year period, that was a 5% increase, fairly substantial. Down at the bottom, you'll see that livestock and poultry are by far the leading commodities in terms of generating income. They generate about 88% of the sales, and then crops generate, um, 12%. We did experience some farmland loss between 2012 and 2017, and if you look at the numbers, it says it's down 3%. That, that may not seem all that significant, but in effect, it really is. Presently, we're at just over 113,000 acres of farmland, and we have 1,005 family-owned farms, but both, both of those diminished by 3%. When you consider that, that's about a 3,000-acre loss or 3,000-acre reduction in fertile farmland during that time period, and that's really the equivalent to losing about 30 of our average-sized farms or losing the biggest farming operation we have in the county. So it is significant, even though it's only 3%. We expect that our next census of ag is gonna show that this trend has, uh, continued or has even accelerated. I think we're losing farmland at a fairly concerning clip. A lot of times, farmland is lost to sale of property for, uh, development of single residential homes. You know, cases, older farmers retire, go out of business, they die. Heirs who may be absentee landowners just, you know, decide not to farm it anymore, so they sell it off to the highest bidder. What has been particularly concerning in the last couple of years is that we're seeing larger tracts of land being sold for large subdivision kind of projects. And, you know, there was one case where, um, an 81-acre tract was sold, um, and it brought almost $22,000 an acre, whereas the average price of farmland is only between $4,000 and $5,000. You know, farmers just can't compete with that level of real estate market. So that's one of the, um, things that I think we need to certainly keep our eye on. How does our, uh, farmland stack up? You can see that, um, about, um, 40% of our farmland is dedicated to crop production. Uh, there's about 22% of that in woodland and forestry, and 33% in pasture land and hay fields, and, uh, that's fairly significant because it represents almost 40% of our county's total land mass, and 90% of that agriculture, um, takes place on open green space, which is tremendously important to our aesthetics and our rural character in Cleveland County. That's what makes Cleveland County a nice place to live and a, a great place to visit, and it's attracting a lot of people into Cleveland County. In preparing the county's, um, comprehensive land use plan, a survey was administered. We had over 700 people respond to that survey, asking about what characteristics in the county are important to them and what things should be considered when we move forward in, um, in establishing, uh, land use. We had, they were asked to rate it on a scale of one to five, and you can see, it's hard to read, but, um, preserving, uh, working farms and open space ranked highest, followed by maintaining rural lifestyle in the county, and those two factors either exceeded or were equivalent to expanding employment opportunities in Cleveland County. So that's a, a very, um, a very strong, uh, concern among the folks that, uh, like small-town living and our rural lifestyle. That's their favorite things about Cleveland County. When we look at some positive things that have happened, we saw a pretty dramatic increase in, uh, direct-to-consumer sales. We've got some farmers in the audience who have, um, started doing some of this to capture the greater share of the, um, food dollar, and, uh, those sales increased $653,000 or 36% during that five-year period. We attribute this, I think, to a pretty strong local food movement in Cleveland County, and there's no doubt in my mind that the time and energy that we have put into building foothills farmers market has made a tremendous difference. That market provides a viable sales outlet for more than 70 farmers in Cleveland and surrounding counties, and, um, we know that we have more than 20,000 shoppers that visit that market each year. And I'm glad to report that because of the growth we've been able to sustain since we opened the market in 2010, just this year, we announced that the market will be operating year-round. These farmers have adopted a lot of technologies that have allowed them to extend the growing season. You've heard cattle mentioned, uh, in the presentation. This gives you about a 40- or 50-year history in terms of cattle numbers. We do rank very high in terms of cattle production. We hit an all-time low of 17,246 cattle back in 2007, but we started to rebound. Uh, we give a good bit of credit to that, to the reopening of the Shelby Livestock Yard, which was closed for a while. Today, it's active. They broker the sale of over 600 cattle every week, and that facilitates income of about $400,000 in revenue to farmers. $400,000 in revenue to farmers in and around Cleveland County. And we are just excited about that as a very positive trend and having that resource available in the county. That's one of the initiatives that we are one of the needs that we identified in our enhanced farmland protection plan that the county commissioners adopted in 2015. We saw some losses in the grain, oilseed, and field crop arena. A 34% reduction in the number of farms and over a $10 million reduction in revenues. That was down 34%. We can blame a lot of this on low commodity prices. Some of those farmers had to reduce the amount that they were farming because they had trouble securing rented land. And we had some limited marketing operations that affected our field crop revenues. You heard from Andrew White a few minutes ago, this was an exciting transition away from the dairy industry into grain marketing. They opened that operation in 2016 and have just gone gangbusters in providing the marketing services and other goods and products that our farmers need. They provide, they help market grain for more than 200 of our local farmers, generating sales of nearly $6 million each year. And just having that state-of-the-art local facility available helps us reduce transportation costs so that farmers don't have to haul their grains so far to get them sold. In terms of the workforce, this is what our workforce looked like in 2017. We had almost 500 female farm operators, a little over 1,000 males. The exciting thing to me is we had 441 new and beginning farmers, and USDA defines that as folks who have been farming fewer than 10 years. So we've got some upstarts. Look at this down on the bottom, you'll see age breakdown. I'm particularly excited to see some, a good mix of experience and tenure and youth and energy in the room. We've got, we had at that time, 78 farmers who were younger than 35 years of age and 883 sort of in the middle range. And then we had a bunch that were in the 65 and older group. But I'm particularly excited that we've got young people now who are taking over family farming operations. They're being innovative, they're being creative, and are just doing a dynamic job. And they're very good business people. And they're excited about the future. You heard mentioned that 97% of our farms are family-owned and 16% of those farms hire outside labor. They create jobs for others. So I hope that we have given you a little food for thought. We're in the food and fiber business, but hopefully we've given you a little food for thought tonight. I think the take-home messages are that farming has been a driving force in shaping the economy and character of Cleveland County since our inception. We, we're, our county's 180 years old. Farming was going on before Cleveland County was ever founded, and it's been part of our history and our heritage ever since. Despite some losses and some downward trends over time, I'm convinced that agriculture and agribusiness remains a strong and resilient industry. There are opportunities out there for us. I think that we as a community should unite, should unite and provide the resources that we need to seize on those opportunities. And then these farmers are really an important part of what I consider to be a very progressive community. I'm proud to live in Cleveland County. I think we do progressive things and and make a real difference. And, you know, we're held up as being an example for other counties to emulate. And from what you hear tonight, they really want and they really need a voice in the decision-making process as we move forward. And most importantly, we just really appreciate your willingness to just recognize and celebrate agriculture tonight. The more that we can bring this into the minds of the community, the more awareness we can create and the more support we can build, we're just going to be a better place to farm, live, and work. So thank you very much. I'll entertain questions, and if I don't know it, I've got a whole team of experts that know a lot more than I do.
Questions and comments, commissioners?
I guess the only comment is, hey, I appreciate all of you. And I'm looking at the crowd, I know a lot of them personally, or meetings and different places. And I think that speaking for myself and probably the other commissioners, we appreciate everything y'all do. That's one reason why we started this small incentive. We knew that the farmers could take advantage of it, not only that, but the small mom and pop stores. And we pushed for that. So that can be just a little bit of help, and sometimes that's all you need. But I'd like to say I appreciate everyone of you sitting out there.
And I do look forward to the day when we can get over this COVID, start having our big meetings, educational programs and that sort of thing, and gather everybody around the table for our Farm City Week breakfast. We're just not going to be able to have it this year. But we'll, we'll love to have you back hopefully next, next year.
Yeah, I'd like to say, growing up out in the county and living on a dairy farm for
a couple of years of my life, I really appreciate what you do because I know that it's not easy. It's like anything else, the only way you're going to succeed is to work hard. And it is really exciting to me to see the average age getting younger because as these younger ones come on, not like myself and some of the rest of us, they're more into the computers, more into technology. And that's what we got to do to be able to produce more on less. So I really appreciate all y'all being here tonight.
And I'd like to say, it is great to see this. And I think with the programs that are going on at the community colleges too, that maybe in 2022, you'll see those numbers going up.
Let's hope so. I mean, we've got good support services, good technical support, good call-share programs, good leadership, good collaboration, good marketing, good lending. So a lot of the puzzle pieces are there. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure that we do the right things.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Just a minute. I will say, 100 years ago, my grandparents were shuckrappers, cotton. And back then, probably 90% of the people were farmers. And, and now, if math in my head's good, about 1.5% of the county are farmers now. But you produce so much. And, and it is very much appreciated. And hadn't had a Cleveland County Fair for, for two years. I remember back when I was a child, the first belle of cotton was always at the front of the gate, and everybody was, you know, took so much pride in that. We're fixing, in a couple of years from now, we're going to have our 100th anniversary of the Cleveland County Fair. And, and that's where, you know, we, we tell these people that don't realize we have 1,000 family farms about agriculture, and I'm looking forward to that. And I've got a proclamation that I'm going to read while I'm sitting here, and then maybe the farmers can come up here and take a picture with you and the proclamation.
Okay.
Celebrating agriculture in Cleveland County, whereas North Carolina's agriculture sector, which includes food, fiber, forestry, contributes 91.9 billion to the state's economy, accounts for more than 17% of the state's income, and employs 17% of the workforce. And whereas Cleveland County rates 10th in state in production of fruits, berries, and tree nuts, 16th in cattle, 25th in livestock poultry products. And whereas Cleveland County, once the state's leader in cotton production, continues to plant thousands of acres of corn, wheat, soybeans. And whereas land and farms totals 113,341 acres throughout the county, and farmers are the stewards of our soil, water, air, and natural resources upon which the livelihood of future generations depend. Whereas the success of local farmers and local farmers markets not only keeps money within the county, but fosters a sense of community pride. Whereas like baseball and bluegrass, agriculture is a part of our county's heritage and can and should be celebrated as part of its future. And whereas through the work of farmers, though the work of farmers is absolutely essential to our everyday lives, it often goes unnoticed. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby celebrates agriculture in Cleveland County and encourages all the citizens to join them in recognizing the impact that agriculture has on the citizens and communities of Cleveland County.
Well stated.
Can you get the farmers up here with Greg and let's take a picture? You know what you're picturing, man?
There you go. Be united front here.
Thank you for all you do.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So now I'm going to recognize Brian Epley, the county manager, for talking to us about our timekeeping policy.
Well, thank you again for the, an update, an opportunity to provide a brief update on a really elongated project for the county that I think will ultimately be a, you know, well-adopted policy that creates some transformational improvement, very consistent with, with Mr. Traywick's presentation about continuous improvement and finding different ways to do business. I think that stays consistent with this message surrounding timekeeping. I always just like to start by, you know, outlining roles and responsibilities. And clearly, the board of commissioners have a, a role of policy and vision, and, and it often relies on the staff to execute on that vision. And then there's times where there's kind of an overlap in that strategic planning where, where projects have both a policy impact and an operational administrative impact. And I think this, this conversion from a more antiquated, less efficient paper time sheet and more siloed approach to timekeeping to, to something that's more modern and technology-driven makes us smarter, faster, more accurate. And I think that's the overlap between the two. From an administrative perspective, in that execution bubble, we really have three focuses. One, we want to be very lean. We want to be very efficient in the things that we do. We want to be consistently focused on resource realignment and reallocation. And we also want to build around systems. Specifically, those three systems involve an investment in technology, an investment in infrastructure and physical capital. And the one that, this one specifically enhances is this concept of human capital. So historically, since the county became incorporated and started hiring employees and trying to be very focused on service delivery, we've, we've used, you know, a very mechanical system for collecting time. In our, in our organization, about 90% of our folks are hourly employees, meaning that they're paid a certain rate multiplied by the number of hours that they work in a seven-day work period. And as the county's grown and expanded, we now have 28 operational departments. And over time, there's really been a requirement and a need for a lot of those departments to kind of, kind of create and evolve into a certain policy protocol that delivers, and timekeeping being one of those. So back in, in 2018, we really identified several, what we saw as organizational enhancements, transitioning away from a bi-monthly pay system to a more frequent, every 14-day semi-monthly pay, bi-weekly. We really wanted to focus on becoming in arrears. Historically, the county had paid in a real-time approach. And again, when you think about the complexities of, of paying employees rate times hours in a real-time approach, when you grow to the size we are now with roughly 1,000 full-time, part-time employees, it, it requires a certain level of planning and execution that becomes very cumbersome, very labor-intensive. And so, and so as part of our path and strategy to modernize all systems, including human resources, electronic timekeeping, payment in arrears, and more frequent pay frequency, all were, were critical, critical goals. Specifically, as it relates to electronic timekeeping, as we approached this project, we knew that we first had to update our, our IT infrastructure to have something that would be compatible with this amount of data calculation and housing. And we, we foundationally set three very simple goals. We wanted to be more efficient. One of the ways that we measure that is, as you can imagine, with collecting paper handwritten data and then transitioning that into an electronic form, very labor-intensive. We have about 20 employees in this organization that spent a majority of their time either collecting or calculating time worked. And, and we think in 2021, there's a more efficient way to do that. We wanted to be accurate. Again, with, with handwritten time, folks often, you know, are in a position where recording their time is maybe not real-time with working it, and that leads to some accuracy challenges. And then the last area, and it ended up being the most important and the heaviest area of investment, is we wanted to create consistency and uniformity in policy application. As I mentioned earlier, the county's grown and certainly evolved and adapted the, this level of service, the types of service, and our employee base has grown too. A lot of those operational departments have had to kind of grow into the way that they did it, which created inconsistency. And we know that inconsistency is certainly not something that we want to base our human resources protocol on. So as I mentioned, in 2018, we transitioned our entire foundational software systems or ERP process to Keystone away from a DOS-based AS400. Moving into 2020, we then converted to 26 pay periods. We identified a standard work week of Saturday through Sunday, and we transitioned to payment in arrears. And you can kind of see all the way through into 2021, when we kind of selected our, our timekeeping committee, our steering committee, and did implementation, there's been very incremental but consistent movement towards this more professional way of, of recording time. We ultimately had a, a full transition goal of July the 1st. But as I mentioned, as we got into the project, where we thought we would spend most of our time in the technical side and the technology side, really, we were, we were, you know, surprised to see that one of the most important areas and where we ended up investing most of our resources was in policy rewrites and uniformity and application. And we think that's also going to generate the biggest return. So we paused in July and then, you know, spent the last 90 to 120 days really working through a high level of training, focusing on, you know, trying to, to create consistency in a streamlined way that, in most cases, benefited the employees. But, but also, you know, certainly reduced risk for the county and made this project move forward in a very supportive way. I would tell you that, you know, when you start talking about staff hours that are invested into it, certainly this project has been housed and primarily managed through the Human Resources Department. But, you know, we're somewhere between 2 and 2,500 hours of direct time, hands-on trainings, you know, working with the software, software vendor to customize certain areas, developing reports, you know, rewriting policy, training employees, simple things like lunch breaks, holiday pay. We know which, which bucket of time in a paid time off system is drawn down first. All of those things, again, creating what we think is a more best-practice approach. As we arrive here tonight, again, I want to, I'm excited to announce that we're preparing after a successful pilot of social services, and there's about 200 employees there, you know, beginning to go towards our final implementation date here in a couple of weeks. And full implementation to us means uniform policy, training is adequate, and that what people are clocking in and clocking out, which is the system that we're moving into, is actually fully integrated with our payroll system. So one's paycheck is directly tied to the minute of how they work. You know, I always take a lot of, a lot of pride and put a lot of emphasis on Cleveland County being a leader across the state. I think that that's universal in all the things that we do, whether it's economic development, whether it's agriculture, whether it's policy implementation. We want to be a leader. We want, we want to be a standard for what local government high performance is. There's a quick optic of our region to highlight just what a heavy lift this transition is. As you can see, Mecklenburg and, Mecklenburg and Davidson are the only counties that are fully integrated for a time-in, time-out, electronic timekeeping system. There's several counties around us, including Gaston to our west, or east, and Polk and Buncombe, I think, to our west that are, have an electronic system, but it's not a punch to punch. It's more of a enter the, the full amount of hours worked. It's, it's kind of a hybrid between, you know, between a, a paper time sheet system and a more fully developed. us to be, excuse me. And we'll see how tough this thing is in a moment here. But it really positions us to be as high-performing as we possibly can. Well, I've really focused a lot on consistency and uniformity in policy. There is one area that I want to touch on briefly as I close that continued to be an outlier, and that is specific to law enforcement, and it's this 207K exemption, which is part of the Fair Labor Standard Act. And I want to briefly walk us through why this is a big deal, how it impacts us, and how it's kind of the last remaining open item before full transition and full integration. So, I want to answer three basic questions. What is the Fair Labor Standard Act? What is the 207K exemption? And how and why should we consider transitioning now? Most of us have heard, whether we know or not, about the Fair Labor Standard Act. It was originally adopted as federal law in 1938. And not to oversimplify, but to the average, from an average takeaway perspective, it has two really fundamental principles. Number one, it mandates a minimum wage. Most people know that we have a minimum wage, and that's created through this FLSA legislation. And then it also identifies two classes of employees. One is non-exempt, meaning hourly. You're paid for hours, multiplied by a specific rate to equal your pay. And then any hours worked over forty in a seven-day work period have to be paid at time and a half. Most people know that, whether they know of the origin or not. And then secondly, an exempt employee, which is salary, meaning that your hours are nowhere tied to your pay. It's a fixed annual amount. So, again, establishes the minimum wage and then two classes of employees. In 1974, there was an exemption added to the Fair Labor Standard Act specifically for public employers in the realm of public safety. Requires a little bit of speculation, but one would speculate that around that timeframe, there was a big transition from volunteer to full professional and twenty-four-hour shifts, and it was very cost-burdensome for public employers. And this 207K exemption really was a cost-saving measure for public employers, specifically in the realm of public safety. And what it said was that one could adopt, specifically for fire and law enforcement, no other category included, could adopt a working period not to exceed twenty-eight days and not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight hours. There are other ways to implement that, such as fourteen days and eighty-six hours. But essentially, what that means is for, and law enforcement is the only impacted department in Cleveland County, because we don't have professional fires in county department. But in law enforcement, a law enforcement officer can work ninety hours in one week as a non-exempt employee and not receive any overtime pay at time and a half. Whereas every other employee in the organization, once they exceed forty, begins earning at a rate of time and a half of their normal standard rate. And so, every twenty-eight days, there's this reconciliation in law enforcement to get to the one hundred and sixty-eight, and then at that point, anything above that would become overtime. So, you can see how the math works to artificially deflate hours that would be paid. As we look at the market, you know, that is very consistent, very normal in law enforcement across our benchmark counties. As you can see, out of the eight or nine that we surveyed, all but one exercised the 207K exemption. However, we were the only organization that did it on a twenty-eight-day cycle. Everyone else did it on a fourteen-day cycle with eighty-six hours. But when you double that, that's still twenty-eight and one sixty-eight, so there's really no difference there. Burke County was the outlier, who treats their law enforcement officers the same as they treat every other employee, which is what we're recommending transitioning to tonight, which is a forty-hour work week per seven days, and anything beyond that would be paid at time and a half. Again, this was outlined as a specific outlier because of the policy review associated with transitioning to electronic timekeeping. But we, I mean, we really see it as in alignment with the rest of the organization, simplicity in explaining how people are paid. And it acts as a policy change without a rate change that relatively increases compensation for our law enforcement officers. I know this is very, very difficult to see, but I'll walk you through it very briefly. Here at the top of the spreadsheet, we just show a standard working month for a law enforcement officer, specifically a twelve-hour shift officer. And so, we have week one, week two, week three, and week four. And the way those schedules work, typically a week has four days of working, the following week has three days of working. So, four times twelve is forty-eight in week one. Week two would then be thirty-six, week four forty-eight, or excuse me, week three forty-eight and thirty-six. So, it's this repetitive motion of forty-eight, thirty-six, forty-eight, thirty-six. As it is now, that equates to about twenty-one hundred and eighty-four hours of working time per year, but does not include any calculation for overtime because of the 207K exemption. So, this policy change would not, would not in any way impact the total number of hours worked per year. Still would be twenty-one hundred and eighty-four. However, in week one and week three, where they're working forty-eight, they would receive straight time pay at forty hours, as would every other employee in the organization, and then eight hours of paid overtime at a time and a half. And when you equate that over twenty-six pay periods, where you're going to get eight hours of overtime, that equates out to about two hundred and eight hours of paid overtime per year. And what we're going to, when you work through the mechanics of a standard hourly rate and then two hundred and eight hours at time and a half, essentially, that's going to raise starting pay for detention officer, anyone, sheriff's deputy, anyone working in that twelve-hour shift to about, at about four-point-eight percent. So, the rate doesn't change, but the policy of recognizing overtime and paying that out creates about a four-point-eight percent increase. And so, just from a competitiveness standpoint, we think this continues to align with the board of commissioners' strategic plan and goals of being an employer of choice, of continuing to support law enforcement. It helps expedite the integration of electronic timekeeping. It creates consistency in policy implementation across the organization. And just from a competitiveness standpoint, with benchmarking, it would raise beginning starting deputy pay, when you include holiday, to a tick over forty-seven thousand, and for detention officers, a tick over forty-one thousand, which we believe is, you know, continues to position us and the sheriff's department in a very competitive, very competitive place. If approved, we would run this on a parallel track to implementing the sheriff's department with electronic timekeeping punching in and punching out, and believes that we could be prepared to do so at or around the end of the year. Mr. Chairman, that concludes quite a bit of information, and I know that I've said a lot in a very few slides, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
I just want to say thank you for a job well done for everybody that worked on this, and I think in the long run, it's going to save us a lot of money.
I understand that the sheriff and the rank-and-file approve of this, and they're happy to.
Yes, sir. I've met with Sheriff Norman several times. I've met with his leadership team, and so has our human resources team, and I think that they are completely supportive of the request.
Anybody else?
No question. You want a motion to approve it? I'll make a motion. We approve and adopt it.
Motion and a second. Everybody in favor? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. That brings us to board appointments, and I'm going to turn to April Cross, a deputy clerk.
The first board appointment that you have in front of you is for the Cleveland County Agricultural Advisory Board. You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you'll need to appoint two people to serve a three-year term set to expire December 31, 2024. All applicants have been vetted by the ag advisory board and meet the requirements of having farmland enrolled in the farmland preservation program. I will hand that back off to you, Mr. [inaudible].
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Jacob Gregg or Greg and Mary Beth Black.
Okay. A motion and a second. And a second. All in favor? All right.
Second one you have before you is for the Cleveland County Historic Preservation Committee. You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you'll need to appoint one person for a three-year term set to expire December 31, 2024. All applicants have been vetted by the planning staff and meet the requirements to serve on this board as well.
Okay. Do you hear any nominations for that?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Joel Roundtree and Leon Martin.
Okay. Is there a second? And a second. It's all in favor?
Last board appointment you have is for Kings Mountain Planning and Board of adjustment. You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you'll need to appoint one person for a three-year term set to expire December 31, 2024. Applicants have met the requirements and qualifications to serve on this board as well.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Doug [inaudible].
And a second. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, April. All right. That gets us down toward the end here, commissioners. Anybody got anything they'd like to report tonight?
I think you have what needs to be reported.
Or the staff? I do have one thing. Over the last several months, our state legislators, led by our own Speaker Tim Moore, have invested countless hours into state budget negotiations that will propel Cleveland County forward in a transformational way. In total, there will be approximately one hundred and fifty-two, almost one hundred and fifty-three million dollars of both direct and indirect funding invested throughout Cleveland County organizations and projects. Specifically of note, the county was awarded a substantial grant of more than fifty million dollars to be allocated to the construction of a new courthouse, which we sorely need. Additionally, the county will now see the benefits of a public defender's office and investments into public safety capital. And we simply wish to highlight this tremendous leadership effort and say thank you to our speaker.
We're just trying to bring some of the past [inaudible] back on board.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate that. Anybody else got anything they'd like to add? Then the next meeting of Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, December 7, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the commissioners' chamber, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.